As a result of notification from at least two parties of possible litigation concerning this item, also includes a possibility of inquiry to the Ethics Board, I'm advising the Board and members of the administrative staff to limit discussion on this topic when responding to questions this evening. Anyone who wishes to speak on this agenda item will be held to a three-minute time limit. And also, there's a second amendment I would like to make the agenda, and that is, instead of legislative updates, or update, make it legislative updates, to include Congresswoman Haley Stevens, who will speak first, and then immediately following, Senator Dana Polhanki will speak. So call for a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Mr.
The favor is the agenda as modified. State aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes. Call for a motion to approve both sets of minutes from the September 24th and October 1st, 2019 meetings.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes for the September 24th and October 1st, 2019, four meetings.
Motion is presented. State aye.
Aye.
Now would be the time in our calendar to any citizens' non-agenda items. If anybody's here to speak on any items that is not on the agenda this evening, now would be the time to speak. Seeing none, call for a motion, Treasurer Slavens, to pay the bills.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills. Support.
The motion is presented. Please state aye.
Aye.
Good. Aye, also, thank you. Congresswoman Haley Stevens, now if you would please approach the podium.
Well, good evening, and thank you all so much for having me here. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, as well as the Board of Trustees and Mr. Clerk. It is a delight to be with you here this evening. I come with a flag that has been flown over the Capitol of the United States to bestow an honor and recognition of the great township of Canton, and for you to display around also our great partnership in Washington, DC, and working hand-in-hand with our municipal governments. I have the privilege of representing just an incredible district in the United States Congress, home to 24 municipalities that are so connected to our manufacturing and innovation sector, skilled trades, home to incredible public schools, which I know all of you in Canton know all too well. And I certainly would like to recognize the leadership that all of you have shown in a priority area of mine, that I join you in, which is around recycling and recycling technologies. In the United States Congress, I sit on the House Education and Labor Committee, as well as the House Science, Space, and Technology Committee, and I am a subcommittee chair for research and technology, which gives me gavel-holding privileges and the opportunity to hold hearings and to put forward legislation, and certainly through the work that you have shown, Mr. Supervisor, with the Conference of Western Wayne, and being made aware of some of the challenges and the costs that our municipalities have incurred, given the changes from China, that have really shouldered burden back onto our municipalities. I join you in working to address those issues, and so I've been able to pass appropriations through to require the Environmental Protection Agency to fund a national recycling strategy. I held a hearing on recycling technologies, and this was really a thing of beauty in Washington, DC, focused on recycling technologies and the standards, having industry-represented federal agencies. We had your city manager counterpart from Plymouth represented, and everyone was saying the same thing, that they want to see the standards and kind of some of the cohesion come into place from the federal government, as well as some of the opportunities that this will really bring to communities across this country, as well as individual taxpayers. And so often, we see in the national discourse, and when we, you know, run into challenges, we see blame-game politics taking place, and really, I'm a big believer, and this is why I'm delighted to spend a little bit of time with you here this evening, and just linking arms and tackling challenges head-on and together, because that's really where we get some of the best outcomes. And so, on October 25th, I'm bringing my science committee to the district. We're going to be in Livonia on October 25th, Friday morning, holding a hearing on technologies for suburban communities, smart cities technologies. We've got some great experts that are going to be coming in, and also my colleagues who represent districts around the country. And so, it's certainly been a fast-moving first year in Congress. It's, you know, it's almost quickly coming to an end this first year here, but been thrilled to actually pass some bills, one on the building blocks of STEM Act, supporting and investing in early childhood education for sciences, technology, engineering, and mathematics, particularly looking at the gender gap in those fields, so requiring the National Science Foundation to do some of that funding. That was a bipartisan bicameral bill. And then my second bill, which was the Advanced Manufacturing Leadership Act, that supports an integrated federal approach to funding research and development, technology transfer, as well as those workforce training initiatives. I was joined by some original co-sponsors, Congressman Gonzalez, Anthony Gonzalez, as well as Congressman Troy Balderson, both who are from Ohio. So we've said, okay, it's the only time Michigan, Ohio are coming together to win anything, but we've been able to win and join forces on helping to see the success of regional economies like ours, see them thrive, and certainly remaining dedicated to lowering the cost of prescription drugs, and kind of providing some of that stability that folks are looking for from their federal government. You know, there's only 535 of us there, so we want to be a proven and effective partner. This is why I've taken a really good look at some of the Department of Transportation funding opportunities. I know all of you have been on the front line around the roadway fundings, and, you know, really grateful for your leadership and what you guys have been able to see through with Ford Road. The money that would go in to doing roadway expansions comes from the Department of Transportation. It's a build grant. We've had in Michigan $200 million of build grant fundings, and, you know, this is out of the billions and billions that they allocate across the country. And when I looked at it, our district has never, ever gotten a build grant. That means Canton, to Novi, up to Waterford, over to Troy, and it's wholly inexcusable that we, you know, continue to kind of pay the price of being overlooked in that way, and we deserve our fair share of federal funding, you know, for that infrastructure guarantee around safe and maintained roadways and bridges, roadway expansion needs, obviously clean water and clean and fresh air for people to breathe remains imperative, and it's so we can continue to do what we all here in Canton know all too well, which is to innovate and to create and be connected to a global economy. We are movers in that space here in Michigan. It's all eyes on us. I'm certainly playing a big role in the Congress on the trade deal that we're, you know, eager to get done for the benefit, not only of our small, mid-sized businesses, and particularly our manufacturers, and my colleagues who represent more agrarian communities, we'll say for the farmers, but also the workers. And so, I, you know, have met with, and I've had over 80 meetings about with manufacturers since I've been sworn in, or small businesses, or training centers, and really keeping a finger on the pulse around this magnificent, you know, sector of the economy that we represent. And then certainly also, you know, promoting equal opportunity, and, you know, the opportunities for all to prosper, and kind of making sure that we, you know, join you in some of the statements that you've made as a municipality around shutting out hate and making sure that we're welcoming communities to all. Diversity is our strength, and obviously, as our Speaker likes to say, our unity is our power. So, joining forces with you on a united front to continue to achieve our goals here in Canton Township and to thrive. Thank you so much. And Mr. Township Supervisor, I'm going to walk this flag up to you. I, you know, would be delighted to see you flying this over here and, you know, in our wonderful complex. Thank you, thank you all so much.
Very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I know you're running off to get another event, so enjoy. Thank you very much, Congresswoman.
Can I read your notes?
Okay. Senator Polhanki. The time is yours, Senator.
I'm going to be brief. Thank you Supervisor Williams, and thank you for inviting me here tonight. I just want to take a couple seconds to recognize and celebrate, and thank you for your successes, namely, the Lily Road Construction Project. And I just received a request from Supervisor Williams today to work with M.D. about your left turn problem on Ford Road, so we're going to get to work on that. Congratulations to Michael Segres for doubling the permanent AV list. That's so important to removing barriers and making it convenient for people to vote. That's impressive. Supervisor Williams earlier this year took me on a tour of your block program, and I'll tell you what, I follow them on social media, and it just warms my heart, you know, what you're doing for these kids. It's, and in addition, you have exceptional youth programs, Lead Like a Girl and Be a Model Man, so following what you're doing, and proud of what you're doing. And, by the way, I represent Canton Township, Livonia, Plymouth, Northville, and Wayne. And at this point, I can take any questions you may have.
So Gretchen Whitmer, the Governor, just put out a statement in the middle of September about recycling. Are you familiar with that at all? She talked about recycling centers and...
I know recycling is important to you and to Canton in particular, but in particular to you, Amory. There is a work group, I'm not familiar with the letter, but there's a work group that's crafting a plan to modify the solid waste code, and it's just in its early stages, and we're hoping that that's going to provide a framework and incentive to increase and expand municipal recycling. So I am aware, I will become familiar with the letter. So what was the letter?
Talking about expanded recycling centers and using EGL, how to determine whether one was full or at capacity or not.
Okay. I'll definitely read that. Yes, Michael?
I have a question. Canton Township has partnered with Growth Works and St. Mary's Hospital on a rescue recovery program, helps individuals who are going through substance abuse disorder connect with somebody who has gone through that, helps them kind of get out of that situation and into a new life. There was some funding in the state, initially proposed in the state budget, I think it was about $1 million. Doesn't look like the Governor and the legislature were on the same page, and it hasn't made it to being signed. Do you know if there's any talk about that being added to a supplemental funding bill? Is there talk about a supplemental funding bill? I saw a little bit of stuff in the paper today, but I just, maybe you could talk about that?
Well, I'm really familiar with Growth Works and Rescue Recovery, and Pat, who leads the Rescue Recovery Program. The fact that it was vetoed is very disappointing to me. I was one of the people fighting very hard to get, I think it ended up being a half a million dollar proposal in the budget that was presented to the Governor. I'm not sure of the outcome, to be frank, and I do know that our appropriations chair, when he looked at me, he knew that Growth Works and Rescue Recovery was my number, and still is my number-one priority. So, disappointed, not done fighting, and that's about all I know about that.
Saying that, I don't need to ask any questions.
Okay. Yeah.
I would just say, keep in touch with us on Ford Road and what's going on there with the funding. One thing I've mentioned to the Congresswoman is possibly federal funds for smart cities, which she mentioned, and if there's something going on in the state in that area as well. We have an opportunity here in the next three to five years, when we reimagine Ford Road, to make it a leading edge or state-of-the-art road for whatever's needed in the future, be it smart cars or communication needs and things like that.
Okay.
So if you hear anything past your desk, we're interested.
Note of that, absolutely.
Just thinking about road funding, I know that you had a conversation with Jim Costiva, who is the Chair of our Roads Task Force, and he mentioned the need to redo the Public Act 51 formula. He told me, had that conversation with you. I know that the Senate Majority Leader said that that's something that he would like to take a look at, and I know that there are a couple of other senators on both sides of the aisle that have mentioned that that would be a good thing for communities like Canton Township and more populist communities. So if you could continue to have that conversation with your legislators, and let them know that the current formula is antiquated and we need to update it.
Antiquated, and it disproportionately benefits the rural, you know, you know. I'm not telling you something you don't know. So, very familiar, absolutely not opposed to redistributing that formula, and we'll take that back with me.
Go ahead, Michael.
I just, one brief poll. I know in one of the proposals for a potential solution for road funding, there was talk about allowing local municipalities to implement a 1% sales tax. Can you just make sure that that's include, not just limited to Act 51 communities, like villages and cities? Try to, if that does go forward, and as they talk more about a long-term solution for road funding, if that's one component, try to slip townships into there, too.
Okay, understood. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Usually, I do find these meetings interesting. Unfortunately, I have to go to another one, so usually I would stay and hang around. But for anyone here that would like to call my office, I would like to give you my phone number, because I'm here for you. So it's (517) 373-7350. That's (517) 373-7350. You talk to Nick, and he'll answer the phone, and we'll try to help you. Thank you. All right.
Next item in the agenda is the consent calendar that will be read as a single motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as amended. Item C1, implementation of the CIP, or Capital Improvement Plan. That's exciting. Item C2, consider approval of payment of the annual software license fees to Kiri Works for the On-Based Document Management System. And then item, the new item, C3, consider budget increases for the 2019 tree removal and pruning project purchase order of Fort Owen Tree Services Incorporated.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G0, consider of a resolution on the matter referred from Merit Commission.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution. Whereas a special meeting of the Canton Township Merit Commission was held on September 16, 2019, to consider a request presented by a Merit System employee at the Commission's July 22, 2019, regular meeting regarding the employee's pension benefit level, and the Merit Commission resolved to forward this request to the Board of Trustees, whereas the request involved the application of Section 2 Dash 103(c) of the Canton Township ordinances concerning the impact of a promotion to a position in the classified service from a bargaining unit position to fringe benefits received after the date of promotion. Whereas Appendix 5 to the Merit System Human Resources Policy, Non-Union Classified Employees' Fringe Benefits, Section I 6A 4, which governs such promotions, provides in part that the retirement benefit level for both the defined benefit and defined contribution plan includes years of service multiplier and any age requirement at the time of transfer, and, I'm sorry, whereas township, the township has notified the employee as outlined in various employment letters and associated documents at the MERS, defined benefit pension benefits provided to the employee would be the same benefits provided to members of the IAAF bargaining unit employed by the township prior to July 1, 2013, who participate in the firefighters' retirement program as provided in the collective bargaining agreement, including future changes, whereas the township pension, township, the employee's pension benefit level has been calculated according to this method in the township's annual MERS retirement system evaluation since 2012, utilizing the MERS DB multiplier, vesting and years of service requirements, FAC calculation, and employee contribution rate applicable to participants in that planned program, including any changes. And whereas the Board of Trustees has conducted a thorough review of the documents and materials provided by the employee and the township administration, including the resolution of the Merit Commission, now therefore be it resolved, Canton Township Board of Trustees hereby affirms that the Merit Commission Human Resources Policy Manual, Appendix 5, Non-Union Classified Employees' Fringe Benefits, Section 1 6A 4, governing members of the classified service promoted from bargaining units, has been properly applied to the employee.
Okay. In terms of the details and the background, we're all in the motion itself, so I don't have to regurgitate that. At this point, is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing, sir, would you like to, please? I'll just restate, please, come to the podium, name, address, and then please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Kevin Samowski, I'm an attorney with the Flood Law Firm. I'm a City of Plymouth resident, and I did send a letter to each of the Board of Trustees members, and that was also hand-delivered today. It was emailed prior to 4:30 this afternoon, and in that letter, we outline our position. It's very clear to us, on this behalf of Director Meyer, that the ordinance was not followed regarding the reduction of his benefits at the time. It's pretty much spelled out in the letter that the bridge down that occurred with the IAAF would not apply to Director Meyer, since he was not a member of IAAF at the time that agreement was reached, and more specifically, and equally as important, that the agreement excluded the fire chief. So at the time that he was promoted to fire chief in 2012, he was promised, in testimony at the Merit Commission from Mr. LeJoy and Dave Medley, who was a former HR manager, that was the intent, to recruit individuals from the bargaining unit to a classified position, and to promise them that they would retain the same benefits that they had as members of the bargaining unit. That was the promise upon which the promotion was accepted. The subsequent bridging down of the IAF, IAAF agreement, their multiplier, did not apply to Director Meyer, because A, he was not a member of that bargaining unit at the time that agreement took place, and the agreement specifically excluded him as chief. As we point out, the ordinance mandates that any change in benefits needs to be voted on by four members of the Board. Supervisor LeJoy testified both on July 22 and again on September 16. That was never done. He never approved it. This Board never approved it. So, without rereading the letter and restating it, there was a promise made, the policy, the Merit System Human Resources Policy indicated clearly, you shall retain your benefit. That was the promise on which he relied on. He took the promotion, subsequent negotiations with the union, reduced the union multiplier, not Director Meyer. No specific action was brought before the Board regarding Director Meyer. So the ordinance, we believe, is fairly clear that his benefits stay intact until and unless changed by this Board, and that hasn't happened. So I know you've all had the letter, I hope you had opportunity to read it, and our position's been stated fairly clearly, I believe, at both the Merit System Commission meetings and in the letter. So I want to thank you for your attention and the time allowed, but I really, truly believe that this was a mistake that was made, that somehow, at the time that the union was bridged down and their contribution to the defined benefit plan was changed, that Director Meyer was included in that group when he shouldn't have been. And that's how that started.
We've seen this for three minutes now, so thank you very much for your comments.
Well, thank you very much.
Any additional public comments? Any additional public comment? Seeing none, is there any board questions, comments at this point? Amory?
I'm just wondering, you had said at the beginning, we have to, because it might go into litigation, be careful with what we say, so I guess I can say...
You're not being censored, Amory. You can say any darn thing, ask any questions you would like to ask.
So Director Meyer, I mean, you are a valued employee, and I want you to know that, that you're important to the township and to the Board. So I really, I'm dismayed that it has come to this, and we were not here when this happened before. So based on, like, we read what we had seen, this is the decision we came, that, well, I can speak personally for myself, that, you know, that I came to based on what I had seen. A question that I would have is to Wendy, if we were to do something, what would it cost the township?
Excuse me. Based on some conversations with MERS, our entire system has to be funded at 80% funded status, and then any enhancement of a benefit would have to be funded at 100%. So in order for us to get to an 80% funded level, that costs $22 million, plus on top of whatever the additional benefit would be. You're welcome.
I also liken and respect Director Meyer. I feel bad that he feels he's not been treated well in this situation, but as a trustee, with the discussion and evidence I heard in the Merit Commission meeting, and reviewing the documents from that proceeding, and understanding the financial impact that making changes would have on this community, as the Finance Director just stated, I believe that the benefits he's receiving are the proper ones, and so I'm going to support this motion.
Comments, questions? Go ahead, Dan.
I just want to say, this is a very unfortunate incident that's happened that should have been taken care of with a prior administration. I, too, I believe, and I think we all support you and appreciate all that you do for Canton Township, for the residents, and for both police and fire, and for all of us. And it's unfortunate that, you know, they threw the ball to us, but I, too, have to support, after all of the information that we've been given, this resolution.
Go ahead, Summer.
Just say that I went back and forth on this decision in my mind, and I want to agree with what Treasurer Slaven said, that this was a very difficult decision. I wish it would have been taken care of with the previous administration, but I will support the resolution based on the evidence that I've seen.
No further comment? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Consider purchase order reduction and approval... Consider purchase order reduction and approval of an emergency replacement purchase order for replacement of damaged contactors, relays, and fuses at the Village Theater.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve an emergency purchase order for the replacement of the damaged air conditioning parts at the Village Theater to Bumler Mechanics, 6260, 18 and a half mile road in Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48314, from the account number listed for capital outlay buildings and improvements in the amount of $11,231.
Support. Terms of background, facility service staff was notified the Village Theater was very hot and uncomfortable. The air conditioning units seemed to be stopped working after Village Theater encountered a power outage over the weekend. Upon inspection, it's found that the contactors, relays, and numerous fuses on the six units were damaged and needed replacement. They did indeed repair it under the emergency basis, and now seek your approval to pay for the repairs. Is there any board questions, comments? Go ahead, Stephen.
Director Holberger, I noticed there was a surge, a power surge, that affected this. Is there also going to be something put in place to prevent power surges from doing this in the future at the theater?
That's what these pieces were, are intended to do.
Oh, I thought they were pieces of what were broken by the surge.
Yes, they are, but they're intended to protect the rest of the unit, so there, it's kind of a single-use piece, that if there is a surge, that would, it would kind of...
$11,000 of damage, as opposed to $100,000.
Absolutely.
Okay, but if it happens again, then it could be the same $11,000 worth of parts that we'll have to replace.
Potentially. We've had surges in the past, and we've maybe lost one of the contactors, because there's six units out there. This is the first time we've ever lost all of them. We had one sitting on the shelf for that instance, and we were able to get one unit up and running to get the house cooled, but the other five units still needed to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion?
Supervisor, I move to approve the reduction of purchase order, the purchase order listed in the amount of $11,231.
Second. If the second motion is presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G2, consider sale of Canton property and authorize myself to sign all the documents necessary to close on the sale.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that Canton accept the letter of intent from Alan and Jennifer Williams, and authorize yourself, Supervisor Williams, to sign the formal purchase agreement and any other documents necessary to complete the sale of the parcel located east of Willard Street and to the west of the ITC corridor.
Support. This is one similar to those that we've seen in the past on the corridor. We are ensuring that the parcels that are being picked up are only behind the individuals' homes and not encroaching on their neighbors' homes. So, it's a, another one of those for the Williams family, not related to my side. Williams and Smith and Brown are very common names, on Willard, to close out the deal for them, as we've done for some of the other residents there. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see, single, so is...
The end.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Any additional staff comment at this time? Any public comment at this time? Public comment? Seeing none, any board comments? Close, be prior to close.
Go ahead, Michael.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to talk to the over 1,000 individuals who are participating in the Van Buren School District election this November, who have absentee ballots out. Make sure you answer the one question on the ballot, and we'll get that in as fast as possible. We'd really appreciate it. Got about 400 of them back out of the 1,000 that we put out, so, but they're out there, and appreciate your participation. If you are in the southwest portion of Canton Township, please make sure you exercise your right to vote this November.
Any additional comments? None, call for motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.